Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I now call the meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afonja?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels? Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Samuels. And we will move on to our opening. And we are delighted tonight to have Maya Sylvia Bailey. She's a 5th grade student at Smith Elementary who will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and opening.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Maya. Do you have something to share with us tonight?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I pledge to be the best I can be in school and to those around me. I will not say something hurtful or do anything that's unacceptable. I am responsible for what I do and the well-being of others, too. I am here to learn and work hard. If I try, I can succeed and go far.
Awesome, thanks. Now, what's that you just recited for us?
Our morning pledge.
Okay, so all of the students at Smith recite that pledge every morning, huh?
Yes.
That's good. I like that. That gets your day started off pretty good, huh?
Yes.
So what's your favorite subject?
Reading.
Reading. What's some of the stuff that you like to read?
Poems.
Oh, good, good. Well, that's good. I expect to hear some great things about you with some poems and everything. Do you write poems?
No.
You just read them?
Yes.
All right, that's good. Tell us who you have with you today?
My principal, my teacher, and my mom.
Oh, on the stand? Thank you all very much for sharing Maya with us this evening. And Maya, thank you so much for taking time out to come and spend a little bit of time with us here at the board meeting. All right? Excellent job. Board members, you have anything to... Any comments?
Good job.
All right. Thank you very much. All right? All right. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of tonight's agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore. And second by Ms. Afonja that we approve tonight's agenda as printed. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr... Uh, sorry, Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two, recognitions. And at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Kelly Gore.
Well, thank you, Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, and members of the Hampton City Schools family. At this time, would Ms. Cherry please proceed to the microphone at center stage to assist with tonight's recognition? All right. So we actually just have one recognition this evening, but it's a pretty special recognition. We are honoring the Bethel High School Athletics Program for receiving the VHSL Claudia Dodson Sportsmanship, Ethics, and Integrity Award for 2022-2023. So at this time, I would like to invite our Bethel Athletic Director, Mr. Drocky Kroom, our Executive Principal, Dr. Tanya Howard, to join me at the podium, as well as all of the Bethel coaches who are present here tonight. If you'd come down and join me on both sides of the podium. This way first. Dr. Howard, this way first. We're gonna bring you this way first. You wanna come on this side? So you're excited. It's okay. All right. Hello, sir. So this award, in conjunction with the Virginia High School League, which is the VHSL, recognizes schools that have established policies and procedures that make sportsmanship a priority and an expectation within the school and the school community. Bethel was only one of five schools in the entire state of Virginia that received the award for the 22-23 school year. I think that deserves a big round of applause. Now, the award was established in honor of the memory of Claudia Dodson, a VHSL Assistant Director from 1971 to 2002. According to the VHSL website, Claudia was passionate and insistent that the educational basis of VHSL programs remain at the forefront. No one did more to promote standards of behavior expected from coaches, athletes, activity participants, students, and team followers. And I think that's very important. It is not just the coaches or the student athletes, but it is the activity participants, the students, and the team followers. So before I turn the microphone over to Ms. Cherry, I'm gonna actually ask Mr. Kroom to come to the podium and introduce his staff, his coaching staff that's here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gore. Counsel. We have our softball coach, Tom Perry. His assistant coach, Mr. Tony Fortune. We have our head football coach, David Porter. We have our head wrestling coach, Kyle Coles. We have our head basketball coach, Coach Craig Brien. Our baseball coach, Chris Auctionfield. And then our illustrious Executive Principal, Dr. Tanya Howard.
That was a quiz. You passed. Good job. All right. So Ms. Cherry, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Kroom, Dr. Howard, and the Bethel coaching staff, everyone, would you please join me on stage? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, the entire school board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, we would like to congratulate you and the entire Bethel High School family for being awarded the Virginia High School League Claudia Dodson Sportsmanship, Ethics, and Integrity Award for 2022-2023. This is very special for me. I had an opportunity, and I should say the pleasure, of working with Claudia during the early 2000s. And she absolutely was one who spoke to integrity, especially for all of our athletes, male, female, everybody. And she was just a joy to be around and just a scholar in her own right. But you know, when you talk about this award, it says that you all are being presented this award because you have put policies and procedures in place to promote good sportsmanship. Not policies and procedures in place to win, but to promote good scholarships. And that is what I think is so important about Bethel High School receiving this award. Because if you look in the dictionary under sportsmanship, you'll see that the definition says, "fair and generous behavior of treatment and treatment of others." That's the general description. But I like the quote that somebody gave about sportsmanship, and it's an unlikely person who I don't think ever played sports. And this is what he said. "Good sportsmanship goes beyond the game. It starts with respect." And that's what I've seen, not heard, but seen, at Bethel High School. And if you want to know who that quote was from, it's Tommy Hilfiger. Go figure. It's the truth. So what I'd like to do is be honored, and I am, to present you with a certificate and a banner from Hampton City Schools. And I'll read the certificate as I try to unroll this banner. Okay. This certificate is proudly presented to Bethel High School, Virginia High School League, Claudia Dodson Sportsmanship, Ethics, and Integrity Award 2022-2023. Let's have a round of applause for Bethel. This is a big deal, so we're doing a banner. You want to... And Ms. Gore is gonna take the photo.
Everybody squeeze in. All right. The banner's a little crooked. I... It's a photo. We need to... Mr. Kroom, can you pull it up a little bit on your end? A little bit more. A little bit more. There we go. All right, pull it straight. I'm being picky. I'm being picky. All right. And... Let's say Bethel. That's it. Bethel. All right, gotcha.
Now, I would like to also invite the Bethel administration team to join. Anybody from Bethel? Come on up. Don't roll it... Don't un... Drocky, hold up. We're gonna get that picture in here, too.
Thank you. Now, can we say Bethel? One, two, three.
Bethel!
There you go. Perfect. Thank you.
Now, that's a winning team. Let's have a big round of applause for Bethel High School. Ms. Kroom, do you want to say a few words on behalf of your school? On behalf of the award? Come on up here, because I know if you don't want to, Coach Brien will. Okay?
I wasn't expecting to say anything. I do want to thank our administrative team for the '22 and '23 season. It was my first year at Bethel, and they made me feel so comfortable to be able to do what I do, to ensure that the coaches had everything that they needed to succeed, which ultimately culminated in us winning this Claudia Dodson Award. I was tasked with... When I got there, I was told that, hey, we need to get this Claudia Dodson Award. So I just put my foot forward, and this is the culmination of it. But it wouldn't have happened without the coaches and their leadership, and then their tutelage of the kids. It's one thing that, you know, you coach and you teach, but also instilling integrity and sportsmanship with them. So I want to applaud the coaches for their great doing of the '22-23 season. Thank you.
And right before you all exit, is there anybody in the audience that is here as far as additional staff members or students? Or is everybody on stage? If you're here, please stand to be recognized. I think you got everybody up on stage with you. Oh, there we go. All right. Thank you so much. You all may be seated. Chair Mason, that concludes tonight's recognitions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's give Bethel High School another round of applause. Item number three is swearing in of our student representatives. Each year, the board appoints students to represent the voice of our students within Hampton City Schools. And this year, we have two students that we want to bring forward to the community. And first is Ms. Sophia Harris. Sophia is a junior at Kickitane High School in the On Stage Performing Arts Academy, where she has been a student ambassador for two years. She has a 4.07 GPA. That's your time to clap. And is enrolled in the dual enrollment advanced placement courses. Sophia is an active member of the theater program at Kickitane and was a cast member in the Hollywood to Hampton film, Click, where she won the award for Best Supporting Actor. And if you didn't see it, you missed the treat. All right? And that movie is actually on its way to the Virginia Film Festival. Am I correct, Ms. Gore? That was last week?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, it went there. All right. Sophia enjoys singing and acting, and she also has been a member of the Kickitane High School Field Hockey and Swim Team. Sophia Harris. Next, we have Mr. Jonathan Jackson. Jonathan is a senior at Bethel High School in the Academy of Media Arts and Design. He has been a student ambassador for three years. He has a GPA of a 3.88. And has been enrolled in dual enrollment and advanced placement courses. He currently serves as a member of the Senior Class Committee and the National Honor Society. Jonathan is active in his church and coordinates youth church at Gosemane Baptist Church. Jonathan participates with the 100 Black Men of the Virginia Peninsula. And this summer, he was selected to attend the Summer Residential Governor's School at Radford University. Jonathan Jackson. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Sophia Harris and Jonathan Jackson as the student representatives to our school board for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Ms. Afonja. And second by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve Sophia Harris and Jonathan Jackson as our school board student representatives. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Congratulations to you all. At this time, I will ask you to join me on the stage while I administer the oath to you all. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent upon me as a school board student representative to the best of my ability. Thank you, and congratulations to you. And before they leave, we want to acknowledge your families that came here with you all. Thank you all so much. All right. And in addition, we do have their school representatives and their administrative team here also from Kickitane. Dr. Lucas. As well as Bethel High School. Also Bethel High School. Dr. Howard. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. 4.01 Personnel Report, number 23-20. 4.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of October 18, 2023. 4.03 Certification of the Closed Session of October 18, 2023. And 4.04 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations, November 2023. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Afonja that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. And at this time, I will turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Raymond L. Haynes.
Thank you, Chairman Mason. Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray. Members of the school board, division leadership team, and the Hampton community. Under the "One Community, One Transformation" mantra, we're pleased to have two board reports tonight. For our first board report this evening, Dr. James T. Harris, Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Janice Richardson, Science Curriculum Leader, and Mrs. Heather Van Hout, Elementary Science Teacher Specialist, will provide updates on the Science Kit Initiative for our 5th grade students and teachers.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the Hampton School Board, Dr. Haynes, and the Hampton community. We are excited this evening to present to you an update on our Science Kit Initiative. Ben Franklin said, "Tell me and I forget. Teach me and I may remember. Involve me and I may learn." This evening, we will bring you updates on our efforts to ensure our young people have relevant, engaging, and hands-on science instruction. More importantly, we want to take this opportunity to update you on our efforts to innovate and create resources, curriculum, and support that meets the needs of students and teachers as we ensure excellence with intentionality. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Janice Richardson, Science Curriculum Leader, and Ms. Heather Van Hout, Science Teacher Specialist.
Good evening. I would like to also recognize before I begin our specialist from high school, Keisha Lucas, but also Jonathan. And Jonathan was also a part of this initiative and still is. And he worked the summer in the warehouse and still works in the warehouse. As you all know, we all get very excited when we can collaborate and create meaningful and successful science experiences for our students. Just as was done this morning at Kickitane High School, where our passion for science was evident for the future of our students. Well, tonight is going to be an epic one, where you will witness one of Hampton City Schools' greatest science curriculum initiatives. The agenda tonight... The agenda tonight will include the following: updates to process, example unit and lessons, walkthroughs, teacher feedback, teacher support, and next steps. Now, you might ask yourself, what is the purpose of the Hampton City School Science Kit Initiative? Our first purpose is to create an all-inclusive science experience in a box called HelloFresh Model for Science Open and Go Hands-on Learning Kit. Our second purpose is to give the gift of time for teachers by providing materials needed for each one. And our third purpose is to create a lens of opportunity for our new teachers to be successful their first year, thereby creating a smooth transition into teaching science successfully and effectively. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you Mrs. Van Hout, our leader on this wonderful 5th grade Science Kit Initiative, as well as our elementary science specialist. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Thank you, guys, for having me this evening. We're excited to bring you guys our new initiative, which is the 5th grade Science Kits. We are very excited for this project, like Dr. Richardson said, to give teachers back the gift of time. And it came from a collaboration of our division leadership and our teachers. So just a few updates to the process, and then we'll dive a little bit more into what these kits look like. So we secured an additional curriculum writer to help expedite the process and continue to make sure that we're delivering a quality product. We are building this from the ground up, and so we're still learning as we go. So adding that person was very helpful. We have also repurposed a position, and we have added a new science coach that's gonna help us support those lab modeling and co-teaching experiences, as well as helping us in the warehouse and assembling these kits and getting them out into our buildings. Here you can see a draft of our schedule. Again, we're still creating the process. Our idea is that as we continue to grow this program, that we're gonna deliver the kits two weeks prior to teachers having to deliver the lessons to allow them the time to plan, prepare, and look at the materials ahead of time. They'll have it throughout the entire quarter. And then approximately two weeks before the end of the quarter, we're gonna go ahead and deliver the next quarter's materials. Again, so that they can have that prior time to look at it, plan, prep. While we're doing a lot of the work for them, they still need to be able to take a look at what's coming and be prepared for the content. And then afterwards, they're gonna have a little overlap because they're still gonna be finishing up the quarter, remediating and doing things like that. We'll come back about one week after the new quarter begins to pick up their previous quarter's material. And that will go on throughout the school year. And then at the end of the year, as they're coming back and throughout the year, we are going to be replenishing anything that might have been consumable, making any changes as we get feedback from teachers, and then continuing on with the process. So here's an example of what you would see and what our teachers see in a unit plan. It always starts with the unit, the name, about how long it is, our standards, and then their essential questions and their essential understandings, which we have actually printed for the teachers to have ready to put up in their classroom. So in each kit, they're gonna have those pre-printed. Those are things that are looked for in the buildings, already ready for the teachers' note writing to go up there. Next, you'll see some pre-teaching or unit hooks or vertical alignments. Again, trying to give the teachers a lens of where students have come from and maybe where they need to be when they leave, as well as linking our Virginia Blueprint, State Blueprint. While everything is in there, we still like to give them the reference if they'd like to go back and take a look. Then we start getting into the meat of the lessons, where you'll find the breakdown from the VDOE, our learning intentions and success criteria, which are also printed and ready for teachers to display, and then some tips and tricks and some assessment pieces there in the Stage Two section. And then the middle part of our unit plan is always gonna be those learning experiences. And you're gonna notice here in the next couple of slides how this mirrors in our notebook and our slide decks and our unit plan. So everything is right there for teachers, making it easy for them to deliver. So here's an example of a slide deck. It's an activity that the teachers are gonna do, and that's actually a page right out of the student notebook. So it mirrors what they're doing. It's got their video. And then we have any teacher tips and things included in the slide decks. If teachers really need to hit a certain point or bring in certain knowledge with that particular activity, we guide them through that as well. Here's another example where we're having them bring those focus questions in, having them reflect, having them write. We know that the state is moving towards the reading and writing elements being science and social studies-driven, so we're trying to weave that into our science lessons as well. Continuing on, there's another comprehension passage with some questions. And again, some of them are science-based questions. And we've even started incorporating some language arts reading and writing questions and writing response for the students. Here's some sample assessments, again, with everything aligning back to the Virginia standards and aligning to our learning experiences. In walkthroughs, I think that has been the most exciting part. We have this idea. We teamed with teachers, division leaders, and we had this idea. We started building the product. But for me, the aha moment really came when we got to get in the classroom with the students. We got to see the slide decks. We got to see the lessons. The box was open with all the... The box was open with all the materials, and we got to see the excitement in the kids' faces. And that was so powerful, and the comments of the teachers were, "This is so easy, thank you." We're seeing more consistency, we're seeing the experiments delivered with fidelity, and our curriculum is going much more smoothly as it's being delivered in the classroom. As you can see here, we have some feedback taken directly from our teachers. Inside every kit, we have a QR code they can scan to give us feedback because we're tracking their data. We want them to have buy-in to this process, and we want them to give their feedback on what's going well and what might need, they might need some additional supplies, what might need to be tweaked. The biggest things, time saver, which was one of our biggest goals, the excitement. They feel like it's easier, they're not intimidated by all the pieces of science, and the kids are excited. And then the teachers are excited, and you can just feel it when you go in the classrooms. So next steps for teacher support. We are offering monthly professional developments via Zoom, again, trying to give teachers back the gift of time. We're modeling some things for them, or going over some difficult concepts that we might be having as a division. We're going in, we're co-teaching, co-planning, we've even been planning some video sessions where some of us are going in and modeling. We've had some of our own teachers that have agreed to be videotaped using these kits and seeing how it all works together. We've provided them with a Google Classroom where we can offer them tips and feedback, and then making sure that everything aligns, again, with the standards as we continue to go. And then next steps, again, we're using that feedback to improve the kits as we go, making sure that everything is really with the kids and the teachers in mind. We're also trying to streamline our process. As you can imagine, there are a lot of pieces that go into this. So we've been using our own academy students to help us in the summer, and then students like Jonathan, who are still helping us every day, to help streamline this process organized. So really, it's a lot of stakeholders, our students, our teachers, our leaders, everybody working together to make this partnership work, right from our own academies. And then our goal, once we get all this going, is we really hope to be able to expand this to other grade levels. So that brings me to my last point. Do you all have any questions for us tonight?
Thank you very much. Questions from board members? Or comments? Uh, Dr. Banks Gray?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Fantastic presentation. It's always so exciting to see anything that comes out of your department. Really quick, it's just a suggestion, but I would love to see the team incorporate feedback from the students as well. I know we're getting that from teachers, but if we can get that from the students as well, would be wonderful for me.
Awesome. I'd love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you once again.
Any other board members? I just want to say, I love the Science Kits. I remember we went on the first day of school and we were over at Armstrong, and they were able to share with us the Science Kits over there, and they had lots of great things to say about the Science Kit. And I definitely like the fact that you are, you know, taking the surveys at the end, that we can actually look at that and see where we need to, you know, add some additional supports and things of that nature. So thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
Dr. Haynes?
Mr. Chair, our next report is still under the One Community, One Transformation mantra. This evening, Ms. Mika Pollard, Chief of Secondary School Leadership, will provide updates regarding on-time graduation results from the 2022-2023 school year.
Good evening, School Board Chair Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Dr. Banks Gray, members of the School Board, Hampton City Schools Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and our Hampton community. I am excited to stand before you this evening to share on-time graduation results for the class of 2023. This slide provides the actual definition of on-time graduation from the VDOE website. Essentially, on-time graduation, or OGR as we often call it, represents the percentage of students from a cohort who receive a diploma in four years. In 2023, Hampton City Schools achieved a graduation rate of 96.37% and continued to exceed 95% for the fourth consecutive year. As you will see on this slide, our graduation rate compared to the state averages since 2015. Please note that we continue to exceed the state average. For the class of 2023, we exceeded the state graduation rate by 4.44 percentage points. Hampton City Schools has the highest graduation rate when compared to school divisions in Region 2 with more than 1,100 students in the class of 2023, the highest graduation rate. In addition to reporting for all students, on-time graduation rates are broken out by 21 additional individual student groups. On-time graduation rates continue to climb for student performance groups who are historically underrepresented. 99.02% of students with disabilities in Hampton City Schools graduated on time, 8.39 percentage points above the state rate of 90.63%. 96.47% of Black students graduated on time, which represents 5.9 points above the state rate of 90.56%. 98.82% of Hispanic students graduated on time, which is 16.23 points above the state rate of 82.59%. 100% of Hampton City Schools' English language learners graduated on time, which represents 27.19 points above the state rate of 72.81%. 100% of students in foster care graduated on time, which is 37.05 points above the state rate of 62.5%. 94.12% of our homeless students graduated on time, which is 17 points above the state rate of 77%. And 95.65% of students classified as economically disadvantaged graduated on time, which is more than seven points above the state rate of 87.78%. Hampton City Schools continues to maintain a dropout rate of less than 1%. The dropout rate for the class of 2023 is 0.75%, while the state average is 5.38%. Hampton City Schools has the lowest dropout rate when compared to school divisions in Region 2 with more than 1,100 students, and the class of 2023, the lowest dropout rate. That's a reason to celebrate. We know that these rates are the result of teamwork, hard work, and dedication. In Hampton City Schools, we have five graduation specialists who work collaboratively to support our students in achieving their diploma in four years. At this time, I will introduce each of our graduation specialists, and I ask that they come down and stand next to me to be recognized. Lynette Hextall Davis from Bethel High School, the home of academic excellence, where Dr. Tanya Howard is the executive principal. Mr. Melvin Brown of The Hampton High School, where a legacy of excellence continues. Mr. Hanif Majid is the executive principal at Hampton. Ms. Kakita Davis of Kickitane High School, the home where everyday greatness is the expectation. The executive principal is Dr. Dewayne Lucas. Dr. Nicole Boston Blanchard from Phoebus High School, where the purpose is greatness every day and every way, where the executive principal is Mr. David Coakley. And Ms. Dana Kurtz, representing the Alternative Learning Center under the direction of Director Myra Chambers. At this time, I would also like for the executive principals to stand, as well as the academy principals, as we applaud them for their efforts in this work. The following individuals are also members of the OGR team and provide invaluable resources and support, and I'm going to ask that they stand as well. Dr. Sarita Kason, Director of Student Services. Ms. Linda Dietz, Director of Accountability and Information Systems. Dr. Sean Callender, Director of Secondary School Leadership. And last, but certainly not least, I would like to recognize and celebrate our immediate past Chief of Secondary School Leadership, none other than our very own Dr. Raymond L. Haynes, for his leadership in this work. Thank you all. You may be seated. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you so much for an awesome presentation and great news to share with our community. Comments or questions from board members? Mr. Samuels?
Thank you Chairman Mason for the opportunity. I guess not to ask a question, it's to make a comment, and thank you so much, Ms. Pollard, for sharing this report with us. It's very impressive. It attests to the work that, you know, Hampton City Schools is doing. And I'm just so excited. One of the reports that I would like, one of the report that I would like to highlight is the graduation rate for historically underrepresented student group, which is the economically disadvantaged student, where according to the report, 95.65% of our students graduate on time. And if we look at the data, if I'm correct, we have over 55% of our student population that are economically disadvantaged.
That is correct.
And that is correct. And when I tell you that, it attests to the work that we are doing. We have been very intentional, as Dr. Haynes has often said, it's excellence with intentionality. And we're not just being focused on one particular group. We're focused on everyone because our motto said, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes." And thank you so much, thank you so much, Dr. Haynes, for the work that you are doing, spearheading. Thank you for the executive team. This means so much to this community, to this board, and this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from other board members? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This report is excellent. And I don't know, because we have so many wonderful people who are doing the hard work. I don't know if you realize just how awesome this is. When you have a school division that can stand up and hit these kind of numbers, and in every single case, unless I heard it wrong and read it wrong, we're outperforming the state.
Yes, we are.
Now, I know we've got people in Richmond who say that our students are performing. I don't know who they're talking about, but I know who they're not talking about. Because Hampton City Schools has shown, I mean, you cannot argue with the numbers, okay? You're talking 100% of foster care kids. And I say that because a lot of times, our children in foster care and our homeless children, they have so many obstacles to overcome. But when you've got caring educators who can propel a student who's having some hard times to not only perform, but to exceed and to excel, that speaks volumes to get them up to a point where we have 100%, can't get any better than that. And these other numbers, what you're looking at with your homeless, your economically disadvantaged, especially when you pointed out, Mr. Samuels, we've got 55% of our students who are in that category. And our dropout rate? I mean, there's something that's clicking in Hampton City Schools that's magical. And I want people to know that it doesn't just happen by circumstance, that there are a lot of hard people who are going above and beyond what their pay grade is and what their pay is and what the expectation is to get it done for children. And I applaud each and every one of you for that.
Ms. Afonja?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real briefly, I didn't raise my hand first, not because I didn't have anything to say, but because I had so much to say, I didn't really know what to say. But the numbers speak for themselves, so there's no reason to go back and review that. These numbers are awesome. They're exceptional. And I'm so very proud to be a member of a board that represents a division like this, because this is exceptional. Thank you so much to the Division Leadership Team, to all of Hampton City Schools staff. But I really wanted to point out as well, like the way that you brought up the graduation specialists, because my daughter graduated last year, my son graduated two years before that, and I can't say enough about how they supported her last year, the last couple of years, through that process of graduation. And the support is there from the graduation specialist for every child. Just because she's a scholar and all, it didn't matter. She had a lot of support from the graduation specialist at her school. And so kudos to the graduation specialist. I know you guys are doing a lot of hard work to get our seniors out the door and into their next phase and making sure that they make some good choices as they're leaving. So I just really wanted to highlight that. That's a big part of that success with everybody else, of course. But firsthand, I know that they work really, really hard to help our seniors get out the door, so thank you all so much.
The board members?
If I could say one more thing?
Ms. Cherry?
I have to. I'm just blown away. I have to say something else. And you know, the fact that we have, and I've got to give kudos, and they know they get it, but we've got some outstanding teachers in these classrooms. I mean, they are working it, and I am just so excited to be a part of that. And Ms. Pollard, I've got to say, more impressed than I was with the numbers was your delivery. You brought it home, and you were strong, you were persuasive, and you were committed. And I am so glad that we have you on our HCS team.
Thank you so very much. I am honored to be a part of this.
I just want to add that I truly want to thank each and every one of you, because you are showing up every day for our kids. And it's not easy, because you have challenges of your own. You have children of your own, whether they're in Hampton City Schools or in another school division. They're still children, and they're still yours, and they still have challenges. Trust me, I know, all right? But thank you for showing up every day for each and every one of our kids. And that's from the bus drivers who meet our kids the first thing in the morning, they drop them off at the last hour of the day, to our cafeteria staff, to our support specialists, our instructional specialists, to our teachers in the classroom, the school nurse, the psychologist, the social workers, the school counselors. Each and every one of you play a huge part, and it's a team. It's a team effort in terms of what we do within Hampton City Schools. And I can't thank you all enough for everything that you do for our kids. As the chair of this board, it's so wonderful walking throughout this community, and people have great things to say about Hampton City Schools and what we do for our children. It's even greater when I run into a student who's graduated, that's gone off to college or gone off to the military, and they're able to talk about Hampton City Schools and what we've done for them and how they feel prepared, whether it's life, career, or college. They feel truly prepared for what we're doing. And so thank you all so much for continuing to move the needle. Because even though we're doing some great things, the minds are continuing to work in terms of what can we do next? You know, Ms. Cherry always talk about the fact that we can be on the right road, but if we're standing still, we can still get run over. You guys continue to create new challenges and forge new paths for our students each and every day. So thank you for all that you do. And I know this board is pleased with everything that you're doing within Hampton City Schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know you're supposed to get the last word.
But you gonna try to get the last word?
Just like a preacher.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pollard, for your report on tonight. What really is exciting to me and really important is the fact that you took the time to compare the charts. to compare the charts with the other regional school divisions to show how we are outperforming them. The question has been asked of us many times, what are we doing compared to the other school divisions? And so this is a prime example of the great things that the teachers and the staff here in Hampton is doing with our students, and they're outperforming all of the other regional schools in our regional districts. So thank you so much for your presentation tonight, and I was just as excited as you were.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Chair, I asked the superintendent, I said, I want those stats on a little card so I can give them out to everybody at the store I see. I tell you, exactly. And I'm glad you brought up the other employee groups because as we used to say, as you'll remember, Dr. Haynes, Dr. Cagiano, we just say, hey, let's see if I can remember it, it really doesn't matter whether I cook, teach, or clean, I'm important to the system, I'm part of the team. So I'm glad you brought that up.
I like that.
Yeah. That's back in the day. That's Tupac.
Well, not Tupac. Ma'am.
Ms. Cherry's the only person I know that can quote Tupac and Abe Lincoln all in the same sentence sometimes, all right? Any other comments from board? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna go ahead and add something. I'm not gonna quote Tupac. But I just want to let you know that I truly am so impressed with all of the numbers that were presented this evening. We are truly moving in the realm of intentionality. And I would like to also add once again that we have a flyer here, and we didn't mention this in the presentation, but 100% of Hampton Schools are accredited without conditions. So that's something else to be proud of. Thank you so much for the presentation, it was absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Haynes?
Chairman Mason, we do have a financial report update from Ms. Brittany Branch, our Chief Financial Officer.
So I don't know if I can follow that up, but I'm gonna try. So good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, School Board Members, Dr. Haynes, and the Hampton community. It's my pleasure tonight to present a update to the fiscal year 2023-2024 School Board Budget. And this update is based on amendments that were recently approved to the 2022-2024 State Bionium Budget. So back on September 6th of 2023, the General Assembly met as part of the 2023 Special Session of the General Assembly. And during this session, amended budgets were introduced in House Bill and Senate Bill 6001. As part of those amendments, they created increased state funding to school divisions across the Commonwealth for fiscal year 2024. There were three significant amendments that were adopted by the General Assembly. First, they approved state funding for an additional 2% raise for Standards of Quality or SOQ, Instructional and Support Staff Positions effective January 1st, 2024. The second significant amendment, they approved additional state funding to fund additional support staff for SOQ funding as part of the basic aid calculation. And then the last significant amendment was new one-time funding to address student learning loss, literacy, and chronic absenteeism, which we really don't have that issue here. It's part of the All In Virginia's Plan that the VDOE has introduced recently. So each time the General Assembly approves or has additional changes to the state budget, what happens next is the Virginia Department of Education, a VDOE, they take those changes and then they estimate what that impact is for school divisions. So on October 13th, VDOE released the direct aid template to school divisions, and Hampton City Schools is estimated to receive an additional $14.3 million in state funding for this school year. And that funding would impact our Fund 50 School Operating Fund. So of that $14.3 million, about $4.1 million appears to be reoccurring funding, and those sources are listed on the slide. And then the remaining $10.2 million is related to the one-time funding for the All In Virginia So based on this additional state funding, the administration, we would like to make recommendations to the School Board for approval. So under compensation, so this is my good news I can share. So under compensation, and I'm actually gonna take us back to spring of this, well, last school year. So during the initial development of the fiscal year 2023-2024 Budget, we did have a 5% compensation increase that the School Board and ultimately the City Council approved for all Hampton City Schools staff, and that went into effect on July 1 of 2023. But in addition to that, we also included in the budget a 1% bonus. Now, that bonus was initially released as part of the Governor's Budget back in December of 2022, but ultimately, the state did not keep that as part of the state budget. However, as part of the School Board Budget that was approved, we did continue to keep that 1% bonus. And it was really for two reasons. One, we wanted to put ourselves in the best position in the event that the General Assembly did come back and say there would be an additional raise. And we kind of knew that that was a possibility, just based on the discussions within the House and the Senate back in the spring. And then the other reason was, in the event that there wasn't going to be any additional increase for teachers and staff, we still wanted to make sure that we were able to at least provide that additional amount for the 1% bonus. But again, I'm happy to report that we are recommending to repurpose that 1% bonus to support a 2% compensation increase for not only our Standards of Qualities teachers and staff, but for all of our full-time and part-time employees within the school division. And that would have an effective date of January 1, 2024. So because that 2% raise is a mid-year raise, we have to also still look ahead to the 2025 school year. So it's important for us to look at what that full cost would be to the school division. So the full cost of a 2% raise would be about $3.6 million, and that's when you just look at the Fund 50 Budget in isolation. But that number does go over $4 million when we look at all of our School Board Funds. So we are in the process of developing next year's budget, so there's a lot of information such as revenue and expenditure pressures that are unknown at the time of this presentation. And because of that, we would also recommend that we would put about $3.8 million into our contingency fund for one-time projects for this school year. And that would be for the goal of just putting us in that better position as we develop next year's budget. And then the last recommendation is the implementation of that All In Virginia Program. Now, I did mention that this funding is one-time, but the Virginia Department of Education, well, and really the General Assembly, is going to allow for that funding to be utilized between now and the end of June 30, 2026. And there are three main focus areas for that funding, one being high-intensity tutoring, the second being the Virginia Literacy Act, and then lastly, the chronic absenteeism. And VDOE also has some recommended target spending, which is noted on the slide. We are currently working together as part of a cross-functional team between our instructional leaders, our student support service departments, and finance to develop a plan that will be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education for their approval. So with this additional funding, we do have some next steps. So those next steps include, on tonight's agenda, you will see this budget update as part of the deliberation. But I would like to ask a request if the School Board would consider moving this item to items for action tonight. And what that would allow us to do is then be able to submit this budget update to City Council as required by law, and this would help us to meet a target date for them to be able to vote on December 13th. So that does conclude tonight's budget update, and I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Questions from board members? All right. Dr. Haynes?
That concludes reports from the superintendent, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, we have one more.
This is an operations financial report from Ms. Brittany Branch, our Chief Financial Officer.
Yes. So tonight, I am presenting the September 2023 Monthly Operating Report. At the end of September, revenues totaled $41 million. This was approximately almost 5% lower when compared to last year. However, that is not anything that's abnormal, as that's mostly related to the timing of our local governing bodies' payments, which always fluctuate just based on our monthly cash flow needs. Then our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled $80 million, and this was 19.6% higher when compared to September of 2022. And that difference is driven by an additional instructional encumbrances, and primarily just making sure that we encumber funds a little sooner this year. Within the September report, you will still see a placeholder for carryforward funds from fiscal year '23 into 2024, and that is because we are anticipating City Council approval on December 13th as well. And then lastly, as always, you do have a list of transfers to and from the technology classification as of September 2023.
All right. Questions from board members? Comments? All right. Dr. Haynes?
I believe that does conclude the reports from the superintendent at this time, Mr. Chair.
Yes, that does. Thank you very much. All right. So next item on the agenda, items for deliberation, we have 6.01 fiscal year 2023-2024 School Board Budget Update, 6.02 School Board Salaries, 6.03 Revision of School Board Policy EB, Emergency Response Plan, 6.04 Review of School Board Policy ECAB, Report of Vandalism, 6.05 Revision of School Board Policy EBB, Threat Assessments, 6.06 Revision of School Board Policy DA, Management of Funds, School Board Policy 6.07 Revision of School Board Policy DB, Annual Budget, 6.08 Revision of School Board Policy JN, Student Fees, Fines, In regards to 6.01 fiscal year budget 2023-2024, the update, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we move deliberation item 6.01 to items for action and make it 7.09.
Second. All right. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we move item 6.01 fiscal year 2023-2024 School Board Budget Update to items for action at 7.09. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. And so the next, Dr. Bowling has the first two policies under deliberation. Good evening. We have 6.03 and 6.04.
Yes. Yes. Policy EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan. In this policy, there was just a small reporting that had to be changed in that to an annual report that needed to be made to the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety as part of the yearly school safety audit. Policy ECAB, Reports of Vandalism, this was a five-year review with no recommended changes.
Okay. Any clarifying questions from board members? All right. Ms. Hatchet has the next policy.
Good evening. This policy is EBB, Threat Assessments, and the changes were made as a result of the Code of Virginia requiring threat assessment team members to be trained.
Okay. Any clarifying questions for Ms. Hatchet? All right. And the last three are held by Ms. Branch. You getting your steps in, Ms. Branch, huh?
I know. Exercise. Policy DA Management of Funds, this was a VSBA update with some minor language change, also for Policy DB, Annual Budget. This was a VSBA update and a change of the public hearing from 10 to seven days. And then the last policy, Policy JN, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges, this was a five-year review and VSBA update and only some minor language changes.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from board members? All right. Thank you very much. That moves us to item number seven, Items for Action. 7.01 Review of School Board Policy EGAA, Reproduction of Copyrighted Materials, 7.02 Revision of School Board Policy GBB, acceptable use policy, 7.03 Revision of School Board Policy GBBE, Staff Laptop Computer Agreement, 7.04 Deletion of School Board Policy GBBC, Electronic Mail, 7.05 Review of School Board Policy GBBD, Social Media Use, 7.06 Revision of School Board Policy IIBEA, Acceptable Use Policy, 7.07 Deletion of School Board Policy IIBEB, Electronic Mail, 7.08 Review of School Board Policy KBE, Internet Privacy, and 7.09 Fiscal Year 2023 School Board Budget Update. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, as I believe that budget items ought to be voted on separately, I move that we approve action items 7.01 through 7.08 as a block.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve 7.01 through 7.08 as a block. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries, and that leaves 7.09.
Mr. Chair, move approval of action item 7.09.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve item 7.09 fiscal year 2023-2024 School Board Budget Update. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, Deliberation First Read, 8.01 Revision of School Board Policy IIBD, School Library Services, 8.02 Revision of School Board Policy IJD, College and Career Readiness, 8.03 Revision of School Board Policy IKF, The Virginia Assessment Program and Graduation Requirements, 8.04 Revision of School Board Policy LI, Relations with Educational Accreditation Agencies, 8.05 Revision of School Board Policy JFCI, Student Drug Abuse, 8.06 Revision of School Board Policy JHC, Student Health Services and Requirements, 8.07 Revision of School Board Policy JHCA, Physical Examinations of Students, 8.08 Revision of School Board Policy JHCB, Student Immunizations, 8.09 Revision of School Board Policy JHCC, Communicable and Infectious Diseases. All right. And so the first four are held by Mr. Harris, Dr. Harris, who's already at the podium.
Policy IIBD, School Library Services, is updated to include recommended VSBA language changes, no substantive changes. Policy IJD, College and Career Readiness, previously updated to include recommended VSBA language, five-year review. Policy IKF, The Virginia Assessment Policy IKF, the Virginia Assessment Program and Graduation Requirements, updated to include recommended VSBA changes, additions to policy to ensure consistency of graduation requirements for children of federal employees and verified units of credit. Policy LI, relations with educational accreditation agencies, it was updated to include minor language changes.
Any clarifying questions from board members? All right, and so the remaining policies are held by Ms. Hatchet.
Good evening again. The first policy, JFCI, student drug use. There are some minor language changes based on VSBA updates. There is a title change based on VSB updates from student drug abuse to drugs in school, no other substantial changes. JHC, minor changes reflect current practice since COVID. We do reference masks in there and the process for students when they're ill. JHCA, that's another VSBA update with just some minor language changes to better match their model. Policy JHCB, student immunizations. We have changed nurse practitioner, we're starting to do that in all of our policies, to advanced practice registered nurse, and that's a VSB update as well as the field. That's how those folks are referenced. JHCC, communicable and infectious diseases. There are some updates again to reflect the VSBA recommended language change.
Any questions, clarifying questions from board members? All right, Mr. Samuels?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Mason. As it relates to item 0.8.05, the drug abuse, I see there language change where although the word substance, or controlled substances included, there's a, they added the marijuana usage. So why there's a difference, delineation between controlled substances is and marijuana?
I believe that's a recommendation, this is actually Gloria's policy, but I believe that's a recommendation for the fact that there are certain forms of marijuana that are available legally at this point for some, so that was added.
Okay.
Not our students in school, but
understand.
In the world in general.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Hatchet. Next item on the agenda is number nine, hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. And we have two. Ms. Bowers, is that it for the evening? Just two?
Just two.
All right, so Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you very much. First up tonight, we have Mr. David Dietrich. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Superintendent Haynes, members of the school board. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. Referring to the last meeting, I'd just like to cover a few things that I find rather noteworthy. When I highlighted the education achievements of members of the board and other members of the superintendent's staff, I wasn't, I wasn't making that case because that was necessarily good for the school system. And then, and my point is, what you have accomplished on your own is not necessarily helping the students to learn. You have lots of PhDs, and one of you even made it clear that you have two PhDs. Well, what does that have to do with the education of the students and the performance of the students? Just like I have four degrees myself, probably more than any of you, it has nothing to do with performance of the children in this system. Your achievements are not translating to the performance of the students. That, you know, highlighting your own work is not what you should be doing here. You should be highlighting what the children achieve. And then finally, resorting to playing the victim card, like somehow I'm intimidating the school board here is just ludicrous. I'm not in a position of power. You all are in a position of power. I'm trying to hold you accountable, so that's just sad. Who do you think you work for? You work for me, taxpayers in this city, and parents of these children. The real victims here are the children, and they're not being taught the way they should be taught. Their achievements are not being highlighted. When I, when I see the reports of the superintendent this evening, they're noteworthy, but your emphasis is wrong. I've given you all a sheet of paper here that shows real achievement of a student in 1954, 70 years ago. This is what was expected of an eighth grade student. I would be surprised if a student today could get 25% of these questions right. In fact, I'd be surprised if any of you could. What does excellence mean? It's a superlative. It means exceeding standards. You continue to emphasize meeting minimum standards. That's like a student getting a D minus and passing to the next grade. So you're all excited about meeting state standards like that's something really an outstanding achievement. It's not. It's the lowest standard possible. Why is that such a wonderful thing? I really would like to see you, as you have failed to do until today, start looking at the students in a much more positive, important way. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sean Jones. If you'll state your name and your address for the viewing public.
Hello, I'm Sean Jones. My address is 110 Wells Court, Hampton, Virginia. And I had a couple of questions today far as like middle school fairness. My daughter, she attends, she attends Caesar's to Ran, Middle School. And I'm not absolutely sure, but it's only two schools that are allowed to use their lockers in middle school. And my issue was brought to me because of my daughter, and she was saying like, you know, especially on the first day of school, her having to take all of her, her book bag, her basically carry around her life all day in school and not feeling safe to put her belongings in a locker. And I'm just puzzled to why that is. Because I'm a Hampton resident, I went to Hampton Schools. I went to Lindsay, I went to Hampton High, went to Bassett Elementary. And when I got to middle school, I was able to see the difference from me leaving elementary school by me having lockers, by me feeling comfortable putting my coat in my locker, putting my books in my locker. You know, just having a locker, and I'm here today to like, you know, I don't understand. Seem like y'all taking the feel away from school. Especially for my child. She just, she's attending her first year of middle school. So like me, it was a big thing to me when I got to middle school to be able to say, man, put my coat, put my coat up, it's cold today, you know, and then again, it's getting colder. People are gonna start bringing their big jackets to school. So I gotta carry around a big jacket, wear a big jacket at school. I don't have nowhere to put it. People, they can't, they're not allowed to change their locker. They don't have their gym lockers. They don't have access to something that I feel is grandfathered into the school. A locker is like grandfathered into the school. Like lockers come with school, and I'm not sure to why my child or a lot of kids, sixth graders especially, aren't able to use, utilize something that taxpayers pay money for and things of that nature and not, you know, I've been, I've been asking, I've been to the school board, I've been to the school. I'm doing everything I supposed to do, following the steps I supposed to follow, and I'm not getting the answers I want. So I came here today to, you know, to avoid, you know, to avoid that and see what's, why is that? Because like I said, I feel like that's a part of school. I feel like that's taking the feel from school. And when you start taking the feel from school, people don't want to be in school. So that's all I have today. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number 10 on the agenda, items for information. 10.01, next meeting, the board will be participating in the Hampton City Schools Community Party Workshop that will be held on November 9th at Phoebus High School. The next regular meeting will be held on December 6th, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. And the school board organizational meeting will be held on January 10th, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. 10.02, other items for information. I'll start with you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The state accountability results have been released by the Virginia Department of Education. They previously shared preliminary data with the board in September. We can now proudly confirm that 100% of Hampton City Schools are accredited without conditions, the highest level rating of accreditation. Hampton City Schools outperformed neighboring school divisions in the region for those divisions who serve students of similar demographics. So you look at Norfolk, Newport News, and Portsmouth. Additionally, of the 15 school divisions that comprise Region 2, which includes all school divisions in Hampton Roads from the south side peninsula and eastern shore, Hampton is one of six school divisions to be fully accredited without conditions. The other five school divisions include Virginia Beach, York County, Isle of Wight, Pecoson, and Southampton County Public Schools. It should be added that our curriculum is certainly written with the state's minimum standards in mind, but keep in mind that it's the minimum standards on a very rigorous assessment. But we certainly don't stop there. We have heard from members of the business community and staff in higher education, and that is represented in our portrait of a graduate. Our stakeholders, to include our families, want our students to be able to be critical thinkers, problem solvers, effective communicators, and able to collaborate. And as a result, we also embed those skills throughout our K-12 curriculum. On Tuesday, October 24th, the Academies of Hampton hosted Stafford County Schools for a site visit at the Academies of Bethel High School and the Academies of Phoebus High School. We were joined by business partners, members of our school board, and Hampton City Council. Our student ambassadors represented us quite well, and the day was informative and inspiring for our guests. We look forward to supporting the Hampton Education Foundation on Saturday, November 4th, during the Second Annual Heff Fest. This event is not only a time to celebrate our educators, but also to raise funds for teacher grants. The fest will offer local live music with celebrity guest emcees and musicians throughout the night and the full menu of food and beverages for the purchase at the Vanguard, 504 North King Street in Hampton. Doors will open at 6:00 PM and music starts at 7:30 PM. Tickets are still being sold online for $5 in advance and $10 at the door, or you may purchase an all-inclusive VIP extra ticket for $100 that includes dinner and a special viewing area. The ticket link is located on our HCS website under the Hampton Education Foundation. And if I heard the rumors correctly, if I heard the rumors correctly, our very own vice chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, will be one of the celebrity guest musicians. Are you ready for the event, Dr. Banks Gray? Tuesday, November 7th is a part conference, part professional learning or development day for staff. Teachers will participate in half-day, content-specific professional development sessions facilitated by the curriculum instruction and assessment team. Parent-teacher conferences will take place when teachers are not scheduled for professional development. Lastly, I am pleased to report the Hampton Education Foundation Grants Committee awarded 52 grants for teachers totaling $39,929. 31 mini-grants, 15 innovation grants, and six innovation grants that will help support projects from pre-K through high school for this current school year. That concludes my, what's, Mr. Chair?
All right, thank you very much for all of that great information. Other board members, Ms. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Haynes, first of all, excuse me. I, I will be out of town and won't be able to attend the Hampton Education Foundation event, but I will be stroking a check to give to you to make sure, because they do just such great work from their inception. But you brought up the accreditation. This may sound like a dense question. In order for school, correct me if I'm wrong, in order for school to be fully accredited, it has to be based on the academic achievements of the students. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So if a school is not accredited, then that pretty much means that students are not living up to the expectations academically that have been put forth.
That is also correct.
So with Hampton being 100% fully accredited without conditions, that means every one of our schools and students in every one of our schools excelled academically.
That is correct.
Okay, I just needed that clarification because sometimes I get confused. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, other comments from board members? Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Chairman Mason. I just want to first of all apologize for my tardiness this evening to the board, Megan. I was attending the last soccer game for our middle schoolers, the intramural soccer game where several of our middle schools' students were playing. And I, you know, I just needed to be there to support them, especially my eighth grader, James, who is a member of the Hunter B. Andrews soccer team. So today was their last match, and I just needed to be there, support them. But I also want to share something as it relates to the intramural sport that we had a report on our last meeting from Mr. Fortune and Ms. Pollard that the report indicated that students who participate in sports outperform their, their students who are non-athletes. And that is the importance of this investment that we've put in place for the intramural sports is to make sure that we allow and afford every student the opportunity to engage in some form of sports, in some form of sports. And it also addresses the fact that with the city's concern about juvenile delinquency in the afternoon, whereas we are affording these young people an opportunity to remain on our campus between the hours of 3 o'clock when they're dismissed to the hours of 6:30 PM, so that they are engaged in activities. So when they leave our campus, they go home, they take a shower, have their dinner, and go to sleep, which means, Ms. Cherry, they're not on the streets.
I understand, and I applaud it.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Kilgore had something.
Mr. Kilgore?
I don't want to steal your thunder, but the entire board had the honor of attending a dedication ceremony this morning. I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you wanted to say a little bit more about that since you were one of the speakers, but...
I'll let you go ahead and do the honors, sir.
We all had the great pleasure and honor of attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Kickitane High School for their new science wing. And it is truly an amazing facility that is welcoming to education. Just every attention to detail that you could imagine, including some things that are so impressive. I know the contractor intends to submit the floor... I know the, the contractor intends to submit the floor, which is a representation in terrazzo of the watershed area of the Chesapeake Bay, um, as it's not only an arc, it's a construction very impressive, but it is artistic and had, I think, over fourteen hundred, somewhere over a thousand pieces associated with it that had to be laid out before they poured the different colored terrazzo. So anyway, overall, just amazing, all the thought that went into that, but what was really, um, nice about it was we all got to see Doctor Smith again, and, um, we got to honor him for his contributions to this community.
And, and I would just add to that, it's in partnership, of course, with the support that we have with Hampton City Council and the city of Hampton. We come together truly as one community when it comes to what we do for our students here in Hampton City Schools, and to be able to put a state-of-the-art science wing on our schools for our students is phenomenal, and it is truly a work of art. We have a great community, we have wonderful curriculum writers who not write, they do not write our curriculum to the minimum standards of, of the state. Our curriculum is written well above that. That's why we are able to surpass the state's expectations and even the state average. We have divisions throughout the state that are seeking Hampton City Schools curriculum. They want to know what is our recipe in this mixture? And why does this mixture taste good? And it's because of the skills, the knowledge, and the love that our staff members put into the work that's done here in Hampton City Schools. And as the chair of this board, I will never let anyone minimize the work that's being done for all of our children
Amen.
Within Hampton City Schools.
Yep.
Doctor Haynes mentioned that Stafford County Public Schools did visit Hampton City Schools, and I do wanna share a letter that I received from their superintendent, and that is, uh, Doctor Thomas Taylor. And he stated, "I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to your Hampton Ac, Academies team for hosting Stafford County Public Schools on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. We found the visit to be inspiring and student-focused. Your student ambassadors were exceptional, well-versed, informative, and superbly professional. Your phenomenal superintendent, Doctor Haynes, and his team led by Ms. Hurd and Ms. Dixon, were instrumental in planning a successful visit. Please know that Hampton's success has had a wide impact in Virginia and especially in Stafford County. Upon board approval, we are looking forward to implementing a similar model." And he's referring to what we're doing here in Hampton City Schools. A similar model
Thank you.
In Stafford. And thanks to your school division's success, we have an exemplar. Congratulations to you, the Hampton City School Board, Doctor Haynes and his team for prioritizing student success. Thank you again for sharing your victory with Stafford County Public Schools. Sincerely, Doctor Thomas Taylor.
Mister Chair.
I love it.
Yes.
One, one more thing that I, I did wanna mention, it got mentioned briefly this morning, but I wanted to highlight it, 'cause we don't, we don't rest on our laurels here, we keep pushing. The Kickitane Science Wing was Phase One, and there is a Phase Two, and that is an equivalent wing at Bethel High School.
Yes.
And we are excited to work with City Council to move that forward and, uh, see a, a real, uh, achievement in our community with an addition like that at Bethel High School as well. So Phase One, success, Phase Two is coming hopefully soon.
Any other last comments from board members?
Well, I know we've all been very, very passionate the last couple of minutes, and, and duly so, so I'm gonna just leave it on a, a light note. You know, my Saints only been in the Super Bowl one time, right? Um, so I ran into one of those Dallas Cowboy people when I was talking about the Saints, and they were like, "Well, let me ask you something, how many times have you won the Super Bowl?" I said, "Every time we been in it." And that's, and, and that made me think what you were saying, okay, every time we in it, we gonna win it, and Hampton School stays in it.
Exactly, exactly. And with that, and no other business to be brought before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned.